Mr. Corvus.
Here.
Mr. Selepis.
Here.
And Ms. Peter.
Here.
First item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from our last meeting, August 14th, 2025. Are there any comments, revisions, additions, deletions?
Just a tiny, Ms. Wiley, it's Mr. Wiley, so that's the only small thing I noticed. Otherwise, good.
So noted. Any other comments? If not, may I have the motion?
I move to approve the minutes of the August meeting. The July meeting, sorry.
Yeah, you can. You can second.
Oh, okay, I'll second.
All right. So be it. Are there any public? Pardon? Yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
Are there any comments from the audience on items not on the agenda? Hearing none or seeing none, let's proceed. Any old business? None. New business? Item A, 640 East McMurray, multifamily residence. Mark?
Yes, what you have before you is a new submission for 640 East McMurray. This is a plan that's largely the same as last time. That was previously denied by Planning Commission. Just to kind of go over real quickly for those who weren't here for that meeting. The location of the site is 640 East McMurray Road. It's just down the street here on your right, off of, right past a couple of commercial properties and right in where the residential properties start. It is roughly one acre in size. The current use of the structure is a single-family home. Surrounding the existing site are mostly single-family homes, as well as as you go further south from the site along East McMurray towards this building, you get a lot of commercial and office-type uses. In terms of natural features, it is largely flat with a starting slope, a little bit steeper as you get towards the rear of the site. The plan itself is for a conversion of the existing home to convert it to a multifamily residence that would contain two individual dwelling units. This is the same as last time. The primary difference here is the additional parking spaces that they're providing. They did provide six last time, but now they've designed it from a dimensional standpoint to meet our requirements. So we have four parking spaces in front. The garage is being utilized, as well as a parking space at the end of the driveway to the rear. The big change here being that they put a 24-foot-wide driveway to meet our drive aisle requirements. There's still a number of issues that remain. Primarily, it's mostly in regards to technical items that we need to be put on the plans, different types of notes regarding existing and proposed uses, existing, proposed impervious coverage, those sort of notes. But we also need to see some grading. The site is not completely flat, so there will be some grading required as part of the expansion of the parking. So we need to show existing and proposed contours. We also need to see some details on the landscaping plan itself. So based on that information, staff is not providing a recommendation for the plan. The applicant has actually stated that they would like to have the plan table, as that will give them time to address the comments that staff has made. I believe the applicant is in the audience. So with that, it'd open up to questions or comments.
We're okay on time for tabling?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, this is the first time seeing this version, so the 90-day clock starts today.
Are there any comments from the audience? Or could you state your name?
Yes, sir. Good evening, my name is Dwight Ferguson. I'm an attorney, I'm here on behalf of Joyce and Philip Ross. Their property is the adjacent property immediately to the north. Now, I'd like to provide each of the members of the Planning Commission, legal counsel, Mr. Fuldrin, with, first of all, just a cover letter, which is a summary of my comments, and then I have a report that goes into a more in-depth analysis, which I'm not going to go through tonight, but of why this plan should not be approved. Or tabled, for that matter. Thank you. So, because of the long history of this property in connection with my clients, it's bought in 2023, and there have been a number of violation notices, stop work orders, there's been a lot of activity that has occurred without permission. They were, this was before Planning Commission. On the 10th of July, the applicant did not appear. The matter was either tabled or denied, so they're back again. These are some of the reasons why we are opposing the recommended approval of the application. And this is something that's not in the, what you've heard so far. First of all, this is an underlying low-density residential district with a mixed residential overlay. So, the proposed two-unit dwelling use is not a use permitted in the underlying low-density residential district. And the proposed two-unit dwelling use is also not a permitted use in the MR mixed residential district. The uses that are permitted, this is now on the second page of this, this is the table, MR.1. There are four residential permitted uses in the mixed residential district. The first is a single-family detached unit. That's what's there now, and that's fine. That's also permitted, of course, in the low-density residential district. Next is single-family attached. But the definition of a single-family attached is a building containing more than one dwelling unit attached to two or more dwelling units by common vertical walls, or a duplex. That's the term that's actually used in the zoning ordinance. They're proposing to divide a single-family dwelling into two units, but not with a common vertical wall or a party wall. So that doesn't apply. And then multifamily, that's actually what's in the notes, that the proposed use is multifamily. This is not a multifamily use. Because a multifamily use is a residential building designed exclusively for occupancy by three or more families. This is a two-unit dwelling. And then it's not a group living facility, and I'm sure you're familiar with that, that's a place where people receive supervised care. So that's the first reason, is that there is no legal use for which they are seeking mixed residential development approval or land development approval. Until you can decide that there's actually a legal use, you would just be giving an opinion, a vacuum, or an advisory opinion. The next point is that while the applicant purports that just converting a single-family dwelling into a two-unit dwelling is tantamount to a mixed residential development, it isn't. The sections governing the mixed residential overlay district, it says that approval or denial of an MR mixed residential overlay district development shall be based upon the extent to which the plan meets the following general and specific criteria, and others within this chapter, and also the SALDO is implicated under the next section in there. And this application is farcical. They don't make any attempt to include a preliminary plan, a master plan that meets the general or the specific criteria of the mixed residential development ordinance or the SALDO. They're not even trying. And so, all the details of that are in the attached report. And really, what should happen at this point, they've had several strikes at this, you can't look at this plan and reach the conclusion that there's even information from which you could determine that it meets the specific and general criteria for a mixed residential development. It's not a permitted use. Really, what should happen at this point is that either denial is recommended, or you find that this application is so patently deficient that it should be rejected as administratively incomplete and sent back to the owner to actually give you a mixed residential development plan and explain why they think you can put a two-unit dwelling in that zoning district or in the underlying zoning district. Thank you.
Mr. Ferguson, just a quick question.
Yes.
This letter just came today to everybody, right? So the township didn't have it before today?
That is absolutely correct, yes. They would not have known about this prior to today, yes.
No, I appreciate that. Mark, just for clarity, as far as last, or two planning commissions ago, it wasn't tabled, it was denied, correct?
It was denied, yes.
Okay, so number one.
This is a brand-new submission.
Correct, so the last time we had it in front of us, it was denied, it wasn't tabled, it wasn't?
Correct.
All right, and then number two here, where it says oppose the recommendation of approval. Nobody at this point on the township staff has recommended approval of this plan, is that correct as well?
That is correct.
Right, that's correct, so nobody's recommended approval.
We're looking for more information.
Right.
And by recommendation, I meant that the Planning Commission should not recommend it for approval to council.
Okay.
Well, here's the thing, we are the ones to decide.
You have vested jurisdiction to approve this finally?
Mark, I have a question, I'm sorry. So you said that this is a new submission?
It is a new submission.
As of today?
As of 30 days ago when they submitted, 29 days ago.
Okay.
But they chose to, they chose to table it for today's meeting.
Correct.
So?
So they've received comments a couple weeks ago, and they've reached out to their consulting firm, and they said they can't get to it until a certain date, so they are asking for a.
My question relates to, did the township, didn't the township publish a zoning ordinance amendment which would rezone this property back to single-family?
Yes.
And when was that advertised?
That was advertised after the submission.
Okay, that, thank you, that was the clarification.
But they voted, and that is now the zoning.
Yeah, this district no longer exists.
Wait, why'd you let him finish?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Okay, go ahead.
That zoning, it's.
That location is no longer exist.
Right.
Yeah, and so, you know, so they, they don't want to proceed with this plan, and I do, I do respect the fact that, at least that this filing did precede the pendency of the amendment to the zoning map, but if it really isn't, if it's not an application that even comes close to being an application that is ready for consideration, then, then my suggestion would be that it should be rejected as so blatantly incomplete, without any effort to meet the criteria of the mixed residential development ordinance, which is, there's a lot in there, and I don't need to tell you what it is, but there's so much in there, that it makes no attempt to do that, so did they really toll that? I'd send it back as incomplete and then, you know, and just put it to bed. Thank you for your note.
So, Mark, can you comment on the definition of multifamily being three or more as it's written in this letter?
If that's what the definition is, then that's what the definition is. The reason why we didn't call it single-family attached is because they do not have a vertical party wall, a vertical wall like it says for single-family attached.
So it doesn't qualify as single-family attached?
Correct.
It doesn't qualify as multifamily?
That's what it appears to be, yes.
As written right now.
As written right now, which would mean this would be a reason for denial.
Right. Do we want to give the, did you say the property ownership?
I believe the applicant is.
Give them the opportunity.
My name's Mitch Kirkhan, I'm representing the property owner of 640 McMurray.
Did you say your name?
I did not. So, yes, we had this out to light us engineers right after we met last time. They gave us notice that they won't be able to achieve what we're asking for in our period of time for this meeting, so that's why we, I wrote the letter to Mark stating that we would like this tabled, so they can get all the information back to us so we can proceed.
So just a question.
Yes.
So based upon the definitions we were just discussing, is that within your understanding of the property?
Can you repeat it?
So we were talking about the definition of single-family attached, which the property doesn't seem to fit into, and then we were talking about the definition of multifamily, which the property also doesn't seem to fit into. So I guess, are you guys aware of this, was it something you were planning to address? Or?
It's not something we're aware of, but sure can address this.
So is it, is it just basically what your understanding is now, so hearing what council said about it being multifamily, that somehow something could be done to change this into a three-unit or more?
No.
Or you just don't know?
I'm not sure.
Okay.
And that's good, because we just saw this today.
I'd like a chance to look at what he provided to, so we can review.
Yes.
Well, yeah.
So you have Mr. Corvus comments?
Don't stand right at that, just one issue you have.
Yeah, thank you.
Mark, in light of everything that was discussed just now, since the applicant has requested it be tabled, and receiving the, you know, council, his document today, will he, there's nothing to vote on tonight.
Well, it's either, before you really, it's a decision, do you table it or you deny it?
Well, and I feel like it doesn't meet the ordinance's definition, it's not a use permitted by the legitimate district, but at the same time, he did just get the information.
Correct, so he has the opportunity to modify the property to conform with the zoning ordinance.
If you table it, yes.
And so, since the applicant has requested that it be tabled, is there anybody who wants to make a motion that we?
I'll make the motion that we table it.
And table it? So do you want to make that?
I'll make the motion that we table it for the next.
Leslie makes the motion, and we table it?
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So it's tabled until the next meeting?
I deny it, actually.
Do you want to let, do you want to?
Do you want to call it opposed as well?
Oh, anybody opposed?
Aye.
Free to vote. Next item? Is Juniper Woods Lot 200?
Yes, this is a subdivision plan before you, it is for a one-lot subdivision, well, two-lot subdivision. This subdivision is located in the existing Juniper Woods development, this is a development that was approved in 2019. That development itself is approximately 30.4 acres, and totals 60 single-family lots. That development also created two new roads, Juniper Way and Manor Way, Manor Way being an extension of an existing road that would extend into the development, or vice versa. As part of that plan, they did provide open space, 9.4 acres of open space, and Lot 200 itself, the one that they're proposing to create, is located right here at the end of, this is Manor Way. So the way this development works is you have Thompsonville on the right of our screen here, Juniper Way extends off of Thompsonville and around and wraps back around. There's Manor Way that currently is not finished all the way through to the existing Manor Way in the neighboring neighborhood, and we'll talk a little bit about reasons behind that in a second here. So the proposal is to actually create a new single-family lot in one of these areas that's designated as open space. So it would allow for one additional parcel, that parcel would be almost an acre, be used for as a single-family home, and access for that lot would be off of Manor Way here. And I'll just point out, you can see that Manor Way, the existing Manor Way, and the new Manor Way do not quite line up at the moment. There is a potential project to link these two, the township has gone through the process of acquiring the right-of-way for that, as well as putting it on our construction calendar to do that. However, there are some legal issues that we're still working through, and we're not sure of the timeline of when that connection will actually happen. From a zoning standpoint, the lot itself meets the requirements, meets them in a lot size, the required setbacks, with the exception of the front setback, but that can be adjusted from 20 feet to 25 feet as is required. I should note that that 20 feet was the original requirement for front setbacks when that plan was approved, it has since been amended, which I believe is why that was left as 20 feet. But when you're looking at the development as a whole, and the reason why the developer is moving forward with this is that, looking at the development, it's 30.4 acres, if you look at the maximum amount of dwelling units, they can actually do 61 units as opposed to 60, so they're looking to get one last unit out of there. They also provided additional open space above and beyond the requirements, so they're thinking that they can take some of that open space and use it for the single-family lot. So in terms of our analysis, there's a number of minor outstanding comments, mostly technical in nature. However, there's a couple of important issues that still need to be considered. And the reason why I'm talking about Manor Way was that, at the moment, it is unclear when Manor Way will become extended, leaving it as a dead-end street. So what we're suggesting is that if this plan were to move forward, the applicant needs to provide for a temporary cul-de-sac at the end of Manor Way so that any vehicles servicing the lot, or just driving up and down Manor Way can have a way to turn around. And the other component of that is we need to determine if the developer is even legally eligible to subdivide that land as a single-family lot. As I noted before, this is open space land, it should have been dedicated to the HOA, it technically was not, but there's even questions surrounding that. So that, for that reason, we're not even sure that the developer has the ability to subdivide the land.
Mark, when did you say that plan had been approved?
2019.
Okay, so if they're, they're close to the period of declarant control expiring, at least if it hasn't already?
It should have happened already, because they're completely sold out.
They sold the percentage, okay.
But with that said, the developer has asked that we table the plan based on these issues as we work through them.
I know, I'm familiar with the plan, and Manor, this little, I don't know what you want to call it. The jog?
You're talking about right in here, this?
Yeah. And there's a barrier, I think there's a barrier there.
Yes.
That prevents you from it being a throughway to the other side of Manor Way.
Yeah, until we actually improve it as a public street, that barrier's going to remain there. I believe for emergency access purposes, we can still access it, but we don't want the general public just traveling through there.
I think there's a metal guardrail that sits across.
It's been a while since I've been down there, but I thought it was just a chain, or maybe we talked about.
It's a metal strap going across. I mean, heavy-duty one.
Can you remove it? If the fire department needed to get in that way? In the, want to?
There is a lock here.
If you want to make comments, please come up.
No, no, we'd like to hear your comments.
It's free, we just need, because you need to be on camera, and you need to sign in to make a comment.
So I guess, before we do that, Mark, are you done with your?
Yes, like I said, it's a relatively simple subdivision on its face, but there's a lot of complicated issues behind it.
How long has this been, when was this application filed? Where are we on the timeline?
This application was filed about 40 days ago, which meaning the 90-day clock started about 10 days ago.
Okay.
So we do have time.
So there's time to work through the issues?
Yes.
Well, can I ask this, when you talk about the legal issues?
Actually, no, I'm mistaken, because it was supposed to be on the last Planning Commission as well, and we.
We got moved.
Tabled it, so, one of the things that we'll need to do is eventually grant a time extension for this.
Or deny?
Or deny.
Right, or deny. So then, if it was supposed to be, then we are 40 days in, would you say, approximately? If you thought we were 10, and then it got tabled?
I think that would be a good guess, yes.
So next month would put us at 70?
Which means, in fact, I think in my staff report, I noted that we will not make it to the next council meeting without a time extension. Our ordinance does allow the manager to grant small time extensions to get you to the next meeting, so that then he can decide on a time extension.
Well, they have to request it.
And I don't see the developer here today.
And I think they have to request the extension.
They do have to request it, yes.
So, I guess.
What steps are being taken to resolve the legal question?
Well, we've been working with our solicitor.
Okay.
And originally at this meeting, we're actually going to have our solicitor and their solicitor here to kind of debate the legality of it, but unfortunately, it's being requested to be tabled for, so.
But they realize the time crunch that they're under?
Yes, and I can, I'm pretty confident that I can get a time extension from them.
I'm reticent to table it, if they don't give us an extension, we can't make the next meeting.
We can make the next meeting.
We can make the next meeting.
It's the council meeting, potentially.
We can make the next council meeting, yeah.
So they would have to come to the next meeting and ask for the extension at that point to get to the next council meeting, potentially?
Absolutely.
To get to the next council meeting. But they could come here and present.
And still be within the 90 days and present.
For us to provide our recommendation.
Correct.
And during that time, council or the solicitor can do, grant the extension? I guess it would be Paul?
It would be Paul, yeah.
Okay. Right, so we don't have, we don't have an opinion at all from council that has not come in front of anybody to discuss the legality of it?
No, we don't have any from the council or from the solicitor yet.
Right, okay.
I know the solicitor does have concerns, though.
Right, okay.
Are there any comments? From the audience? Please come up.
You could just sign in as well?
Yes, we're here.
Thank you. Just my name, or if you want?
Your name and the street address, yeah.
And address?
Yeah.
Thank you. I have a long name. Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Melissa Nabwoski, and I live at 116 Marble Drive. I would like to respectfully submit a petition into the record that is in opposition of Lot 200 subdivision plan number one. 64 households signed this petition. 49 are within .25 miles of the property in question. Whether each household is directly impacted or not, we all share the same opposition. Please stop allowing these developers to ruin the community that we love. Stop building on wetlands, stop robbing us of our green space. The green space in our community makes Peters Township special, and for some, it's the reason why we moved here. We have made significant investments in our homes, and your decision will impact our property values. We urge you to review all local zoning, environmental, and land use codes to ensure this project is in compliance. It is our understanding that the lot in question is a part of an existing open space for Juniper Woods that was supposed to be in a land trust. Using this lot to build a house was never part of the approved plan. We were promised a natural buffer between Juniper Woods and the surrounding neighborhoods. There are many technical difficulties with the location of this subdivision. I'm urging the Planning Commission to reject the proposed development plan for this one, and I repeat, one household. And please listen to the 64 households in opposition. This development plan does not reflect the needs, the values, or the long-term interests of this community. We are not against growth. We are against reckless, short-sighted development that places profit over people. In closing, I ask you as stewards of this community's future to prioritize the sustainable growth, the responsible use of land and planning, and the voices of the people who live here. Please vote against this development proposal, and let's preserve what we value before it's gone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I just submit it to you?
I'll have to mark action.
Hi, my name's Ken Lang. Who's the?
Here, it was just.
I guess my question to you is, you said that the solicitor has concerns. Can you kind of talk about that?
Well, the concern is, for one, this should have been part of the HOA's ownership. I believe the HOA has taken over ownership of the other sets of open spaces, but for some reason, this has not occurred with this particular parcel. And with that said, subdividing an open space parcel that's to benefit the development or the approval of that development, who's the right, who has the right to actually sign off on the plans? Typically, on plans, we have all the owners sign off. So is the owner the HOA, is it Mr. Welsh, is it everyone in the development? We're not quite sure yet. And that's, that's really the whole crux of this, that and the fact that this was part of an approved plan already. So really, in our mind, this should be a revision to that approved plan.
Right, but that wasn't on the original plan, this lot?
Correct.
No, I just, I basically, I just live on Beacon Way, I've been here 28 years, and really, you know, it's from a standpoint of Juniper Woods and also the residents, they're looking on my side. local on my side, really, from a standpoint, we really don't want that right-of-way. Now, there was a discussion at one time about putting a gate up for safety, because council, basically, when we approved that, that never came to fruition, though, you know, for, right-of-way for emergency vehicles.
I'm not sure where we're at, like, in terms of the emergency access. I know the plan is to make it a full-blown public right-of-way.
Would that be considered something the planning commission could do versus a full-blown?
I don't know, but that's in front of us right now.
That is not in front of us. That would be, what I'd recommend is, is that would be something you'd take to council.
All right. Well, just the last comment is, developers aren't even here today, so, but your residents are, so hopefully you hear us, you listen to us.
Developers requested.
He's a little late. Thank you.
Woody, we're discussing Juniper Woods right now. Did you have any comments you'd like to make?
No, I literally have another meeting I was at. I don't know what transpired so far.
Please come up.
I'm sorry?
Please come up, if you're going to speak.
I mean, if you have no comments that you want to make, then that's fine. You don't have to speak.
No, I really don't have any comments. Just, we'll make it, we'll present at the next meeting.
Okay, so there's a request to table, but we haven't voted on that, so just to be clear on that for you before. So just wanted to-
What was the request?
You made the request to table.
Yes.
Right, we just, we haven't voted on that yet, so.
We just had open discussion by comments from the audience.
Okay, thank you.
So, any other comments from the audience? Yes, sir.
Come up.
Do you want me to sign in? My name's Deborah Bosco. I live at 2921 Beacon Way. And we obviously have safety concerns, which are addressed, but I believe this evening is more about environmental, green space, the wetlands, maintaining that. So when we were here previously, before the development was made, and our property abuts to Juniper, it was approved, my recollection, for 60 patio homes, but there are very few patio homes within the development. So the question is, if that was 30 acres that was developed with a 25% green space per Peters Township regulations, unless there's been some sort of stipulation and/or waiver provided to the developer that maybe I'm not privy to, and if you, if anybody knows, maybe they can provide that. But the 25% green space, how and when was that calculated? Was that calculated from the plans when there were 60 patio homes, which are, of course, much smaller than the homes that are there? The other aspect is, how is it currently being maintained? Because that is a regulation that there should be green space. In my mind, when the development was proposed and all these trees were there and green space, the trees weren't left, it was just really leveled, which, you know, I'm not a developer. I understand how it was. I did talk to an excavator about that, and they typically go in and clear, but it was very disruptive to our property, and I believe the other property owners, they could speak for themselves. But that land was moved so many times and quickly, and we had such loud vibration, and we have cracks in our home from the disruptive nature of the development. A lot of cracks. And we have 1.3 or 1.4 acre, so we're pretty far away from that, and the amount of disruption. So that's, of course, another concern. The amount of disruption, of course, the terrible amount of light pollution that is now there because those residents are required to maintain some sort of lighting at night. You know, it's disruptive to the environment, it has dislodged all of the animals. The proposed lot, that is the, would be the 61st lot, and that really isn't even part of that development. It was not even, I'm not sure how that is happening. You know, how does that, what is the disruptive nature going to be? You know, that lot was cleared a while ago, gas and electric were put on there. I'm not sure how that transpired. You know, it would be lovely to see a park for all these kids that are, and I walk there almost daily. They're on motorized scooters, they're on motorized cars. Each home has numerous cars and has numerous children, and they're whizzing around, and I'm concerned about the safety. Recently, we had a 54-foot truck get stuck on Beacon Way because the Google shows that that connection is there. The gentleman, there would have been no way for him to make the left. I had to direct him and give him directions, he barely spoke English, to back up Beacon, and then he made the right onto Manor, and then the right on Locust. He took out some signs, he took out some branches, and he had to go up and around. So the concern, of course, is, do they know to come straight down Locust and make the left onto Manor? It's not adequate space for a 54-foot truck. When we have contractors working in our neighborhood, you cannot get through. We've been there. My husband's been there 38 years, I've been there almost 16. Many of the other residents much longer than I, but I appreciate the fact that developers want to develop. They're in the business to making money. But we're here as Peters Township residents and, you know, addressing you folks because you're here for the residents. Everybody moved here to keep this a very nice neighborhood, and it's just house upon house upon house. And that's really not why most of us have moved here, but the big concern, of course, is the road has not yet been connected. So if Peters Township would, in fact, the planning committee approve this lot in the paper that we received that said access to Manor Way, so are they pushing through to make that? What happens to the safety? How is Peters Township going to maintain or trucks? I've seen so many people back up. How are they going to service that property if, in fact, the ongoing issue with the connector and safety has not yet been determined or addressed? So, let me see if there's anything else. And then the other thing that I had noticed when this was being developed, there are springs everywhere within that development because, you know, as things are clear, there are natural springs. We have a natural spring that runs through our property, and as, you know, there's nowhere for the water to go. So what happens to that other lot? Is it maintaining the correct DEP regulations? Where is the water going? Is it going to the right watershed? You know, it just seems really unusual that Peters would approve 60 patio homes, and then we have these monster homes on these fairly small lots or partial lots that are not usable. And now they're putting a 61st, wanting to put a 61st. So, you know, it's all of these environmental and safety and wetland concerns, and huge safety. You know, I would be fearful of somebody coming through our neighborhood late at night that was not familiar with the roads, very narrow, very steep. You know, there's no way of fixing that now, of course, but I think it needs to be addressed. Of course, if a gate would be installed for safety, everybody's, you know, in favor of everyone being safe. We're not in favor of overcrowding and making it unsafe and more disruptive. So I think that's all I have to say. I'll finish writing my name.
Well, thank you for your comments.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
Hey, Mark, can you ask me a question? I don't know this offhand, I don't know if you've ever seen this before. So the original plan was approved with a particular percentage of green space, and if this lot was included in that green space calculation-
Yes.
-this goes away, which dips down the amount of green space. What happens?
They would, right now, they provided in that plan, the Juniper Plan up here, you can see all the green space, that amounts to 30% of the site. So with this addition, or subtraction, I guess, from the open space, that brings it to, I believe, 27%.
Which is still within the requirement.
Which is still above the 25% now.
Mark, I guess I'm just confused on why this, I mean, this is an approved plan with this exact amount of open space and these exact requirements. I don't understand why this doesn't have to be, they don't have to put it for this as like an amendment or a new order.
That's part of what we're researching to figure out.
Okay.
They're proposing it even initially as a minor plan, which definitely is not a minor plan.
Right.
So we want, we're trying to figure out what is the legal process to go through here.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I guess, yeah.
My name is Alexis Andash, and I'm one of the, what, 1035 Elizabeth Drive. I'm part of the Crestview Acres Plan, which includes that property. I was one of the signatures on Melissa's petition. We're a really close community. We value neighbors and open space and respect. Melissa had less than a week to put this petition together, and she got 64 homes to sign. She could easily get 10, 20. I mean, there's homes in our neighborhood who she didn't have a chance to reach. So I would just implore you to listen to the constituents, the community. If there's 64 of us homes, that's, you know, two people per home, I know you don't calculate that way, but there's many more that could sign this, and we are very opposed to this subdivision. Thank you.
Thank you. I think just, oh, yes, yes.
So, my name is Sarah Smiles, and I live at 348 Juniper Way, so I'm one of the Juniper Woods residents. My property backs up to this open space that, until this meeting, I was under the impression was part of the HOA. I think my concern is just that although there is more than 25% open space in our neighborhood, it is not really usable space. It's very, I mean, part of it's a gas pipeline, it's very hilly, and basically, it's really between all the houses, so it's not accessible. And as mentioned before, there are a lot, a lot of young children, and having more development and more traffic through our neighborhood is obviously not desirable. So I just wanted to express that kind of as an immediate person living in the development.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I guess my thought is, the reason I'm considering or thinking about making a motion to table is because if there are legal issues here, and we have a solicitor who we want to ensure has had enough time to assess all the legal matters here, and then be able to come back and fully do that, what that helps or determines for us is on what basis we can within, you know, the legal requirements, either approve or deny, so that we have all that information.
If the plan is properly before us in its current state-
Right.
-may need to be restyled as an amendment.
Right, just so that we're making our decisions in such a way, our recommendations in such a way that they would have, they would hold up down the road.
With full information, I mean, at this point, it's pretty open-ended with the legal questions, and we can make a decision, but would that hold up if-
What are the proposed issues of, what are the responses?
Well, right. I mean, not with the answer. So that's, that's kind of the issue, I think, maybe for me.
Yeah.
Hi, I'm Jim Kittleberger. I'm with Deb. Lucky me.
Very lucky.
Very good.
Very lucky.
Question I have is, I'd heard that in developing this one lot, which is the tail end of Manor, if there was no connection, would a cul-de-sac have to be produced for that lot?
Correct.
The gate, as it goes now, is not on the table, but if there was no connection, then the development would have to include a cul-de-sac for this one house. If there's a gate there, what happens then?
A gate where?
Between the, where this connection is, the one that we've been proposing for the last five years.
Sort of like the end of the Manor on the Juniper Woods side.
Right. It would be-
Right here. Well, I would imagine if you put the temporary cul-de-sac, and it would be temporary, that gate would just stay there in its place.
Right. If it was a gate to control traffic-
Yeah, right.
Would that still be developed, that lot? If there was a gate there?
If there's a gate and there's a cul-de-sac.
Oh, so a cul-de-sac, if there was a gate, then a cul-de-sac would be needed, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay.
Township vehicles, garbage trucks, all of them need to be able to turn around.
Well, the idea with a gate in regards to what Township has always said since day one is safety. That's the only explanation we ever heard in regards to why we want this connection, for safety. And we're all, how many times have we heard that word today? For safety. So we're happy to have the municipal and emergency vehicles and the school buses and the garbage trucks to come through, but not hundreds of Uber drivers and Amazon deliveries. So my point is, if there's a gate available for emergency municipal vehicles, is a cul-de-sac still going to be needed?
Yes, because you've got other vehicles that need to turn around.
Like, like it would be a construction vehicle that would have to be able to turn around.
Right, or the garbage truck.
Or the garbage truck would maybe be allowed to go through that gate.
Again, now you're giving out keys or codes to many, many-
To appropriate, would school buses be allowed to go through? You would think that would be appropriate. Snowplows, right? My point is, is that it's not a foregone conclusion, it's definitely going to be a full-access public growth. Because I've had contact with the municipal or the council, and they are willing to, well, we'll see what happens once this connection comes. Because certainly, the Juniper Woods neighborhood has had two, three years of quiet enjoyment of their property, and a lot of their play is on the road. If you go there on a Saturday, half a dozen Hello Kitty cars on the road, racing each other on the road. And I understood in conversations with my neighbors that their perception was, there's going to be a gate to be able to make this a safe place to be. Something to consider if eventually that gate has to be in because of the amount of traffic that's coming through. Two reasons. One, we have the steepest, one of the steepest roads in Washington County that's only 17 feet wide from the debacle from 25 years ago, 18 feet at most. And now you've got 60 homes with 59 of them little kids, okay? Making sense where I'm coming here?
No, I understand, yeah.
The gate may eventually be there. That's my point.
So I think what we would, I would point out, speaking for myself, is I don't think we would agree to approve a plan that didn't have some finality there. I don't think open-ended would be something we would consider to say this is a complete rule.
Correct, right, right.
Now, we're not there yet, obviously, and we're just hearing today.
And this, the gate may be down the road, because I think we're willing to say, how much traffic is going to be once it's open to the public? Right now, by my home, I get six vehicles a day to go by, because I have two neighbors that are past my driveway. A study was done when this was all happening, and that study showed up to 600 more cars a day coming through there. That seemed a lot, but that was what this gentleman came up with. If you go from 60, from 6 to 60, yeah, that might be tall, but to have hundreds of more vehicles coming through there, we're going to have a parade coming to council then and saying, we've got to think about a gate. Because what was the number one reason we needed to have this connection every time? Ambulance and police and fire and the SWAT team was mentioned a few times. We just want safety and quiet enjoyment. Our neighborhood is a poster child for quiet enjoyment. It's a great place to live. Juniper Woods has found out, this is a really nice neighborhood, because we're going to have all these kids growing up together. So that has to be thought of in regards to planning for this. If there's a gate, then yeah, cul-de-sac may be needed, because that might be there. Strong possibility it's going to be there. Based on my conversations with council after this was done, and after they finally won eminent domain and said, okay, we've got this connection, what's going to happen? And I had a couple of conversations, we'll revisit that. I think council's on board with making sure that what's best for us can be able to balance out what's best for a developer. Okay? All right, thanks, guys. Thank you. Thank you.
Mark, if I can revisit the timing issue. So the, the plan itself was dated June tenth. We had a meeting July tenth here, so the clock would have started at least as of July tenth. So I don't know, do we get to our next meeting?
I don't think we took the, I'd have to look at when we actually submit, when the plan was submitted.
Okay, it says on the plan that it was, well, on your comments, it was dated June tenth, our meeting again was July ten. So if it was submitted at any point during those two dates, the clock started July ten.
Yes.
So do we get to the October meeting of this board? And the developer's here, if we can request the extension.
We can certainly request an extension. That would be the time to do it, since he is here.
I guess, Mr. Welsh, would you be willing to grant an extension on the record tonight for us to table this? Because otherwise, we may run out of time.
Yes.
Thank you.
So October's meeting would be the ninth, which puts us right up against it.
Right, but the council doesn't get a plan in drain.
So the question is, how much of an extension would you like to be granted from the developer? Sixty days?
Would a sixty-day extension be acceptable?
Yes, it was.
I mean, do we need sixty? Could it be thirty?
But that doesn't mean that it's at all.
Yeah, I'd go for sixty, just to, just to have a question.
Right, we don't know what our solicitor's doing.
And the solicitor, there could be a lot of issues going back and forth.
And it's an extension, doesn't mean if they're giving some funding, it doesn't mean.
We can set a stamp.
It'll be on, it would go back on the Juniper next month.
Yes, this will be on that October ninth meeting, October ninth meeting.
Right, and then that gives, that gives the solicitor to the legal issues.
Yes, he was prepared to come tonight, but we couldn't get the other solicitor here.
Okay. Mr. Welsh, we would request if you, if we agree to table, that you provide in writing the request to extend for sixty days.
I have a form, I have a form I can give you.
Okay.
That'd be fun.
Thank you.
So are there any other comments?
Hello?
Hi there.
I'm Joe Delisio. I live on Manor Way. I've been there since nineteen eighty-three. And I can't understand how a plan is approved. Juniper Woods was approved by this planning commission, and it's been changed numerous times. If I lived in Juniper Woods, I'd be up there screaming bloody murder about it. And I'm sure most of the people there have no idea what the initial approval was. I'm not sure if you remember that or not. And hopefully, next meeting, you can bring that approval, so everybody can look at it. And I can tell you, some of the things are wrong. There was approval for a sidewalk all the way around Juniper Woods. That's no longer there. That's not there. The patio homes was another issue. There's, I think there's two patio homes in the whole plan. As far as the free space goes, this is the largest parcel of free space. It's right across the creek. I don't know about wetlands, whether that comes into play with this or not, but when Juniper Woods was built, where do you think all the wildlife went? It went to that parcel. Now you want to build more there. I mean, it's just, you approved the plan for so many homes, this was part of it. Now you're up there, you want to change your approval.
I don't know that we do.
Yeah, correct. What I'm saying.
What I'm saying, don't change your approval. It's been changed. I hope you bring the original plan out. If not, I have one. I'll bring it next meeting.
This is the original plan, right there.
I'm talking about like with the sidewalks, and there's supposed to be a designated crosswalk in Juniper Woods. You remember that?
Mm-hmm.
Is there not a sidewalk all the way around Juniper Woods?
There should be.
Well, there's a lot.
You walked it.
No, there's a place where there's a guard rail there where you could.
Yes, you're correct.
Yeah, that's, that's right, that's right, yeah, yeah. There's probably other things in the plan, too. I haven't looked it up, because I didn't know we were going to go into that. As far as the road connection goes, that's in litigation. So that, that's right, that's a mute point of the present time, but.
So just to be clear, so we're not saying we want to do anything.
Okay.
What we're trying to do is make sure that we have all of the information in front of us, especially, especially when we're talking about legal issues, especially when we're talking about things that, you know, don't always stop with that, don't always stop with council. So we want to make sure that we have professionals, you know, I mean, who can take a look at these legal issues, and you've heard three, four, or five of them. But I, it would be incorrect to say that we want to change anything. We just, we hear things that come in front of us, and then we try and determine, you know, where it sits.
I understand. That's why I'm bringing up that point, you know.
I just want to make sure that we're not, we're not advocating.
Yeah, and I'm just bringing up the point, a plan's approved, and then it just seems it gets changed whenever a developer wants it to be changed.
And that's why we, one of the questions we asked was, is this a filling amendment?
They have to do the proper procedures in order to enact that change.
So, and we just want to make sure we hear everything.
We're in the midst of doing that now.
And to be clear, the reason that we had asked about the extension is, we don't want to be in a position where there's a deemed approval of a plan that we don't want or the community doesn't want. If we don't have the information, we need to get the extension so that we can review all of the information.
And the legal requirements.
If the clock, if the clock runs out without a decision, it's a deemed approval. So we're trying to avoid that potentially happening. The extension allows us to get the complete information to make a decision, which we would be prepared to do, I think, once we had that information.
Okay.
Okay.
And is it possible with, with the green space to calculate out those areas, what percentage they actually take up to come up with your twenty-seven percent of the free, of green space?
Yeah, there's, there's ways to do that.
Because it's, it's hard to believe. And I don't know if you're calculating that area where the gas line, is that gas line runs through there is, is green space?
Basically, whatever you see green there.
Yeah, and I think that's part of where the, where the gas line runs through. I don't know how you consider that a green space, but.
Well, it's called, it's called, it's open space.
Open space.
Open space by definition.
It's undeveloped.
Means, well, what it means is that it's, there's no building there.
Structure on top of that property.
So it just means that it's open. That's all that it means. And it means that there's not a house there, there's not.
It's not a park, it's not a playground.
And I think the residents think of green space as an area they can use as well as their own property.
Like the other lady said, you know, the topography of this plan, the backs of some of those houses are near vertical.
Yeah, it's, and even down where you're talking about this lot is, they filled in the creek area with cul-de-sac, I mean, culvert. And, I mean, there's all kinds of stuff growing through there now, cattails and everything else. So I don't know if they ordered the wetlands or not down that area. That's another issue, would have to be, I don't know if you consider that, or that has to go to the county to look at wetlands in that area.
We get, we get information from the different other governmental, you know, entities, who then advise whether certain requirements have been met. We don't make those determinations, obviously. But again, open space, just from a definitional standpoint, does not mean, you know, unfortunately or fortunately, and I'm not making a cog in the way, does not mean that like you can play on it, things like that. It just, it simply means that it's open, right? And the way the definition is, so it's green and open, and I'm sure that all, it means the same thing as far as generally. But that just means that it is, it is open, and it is not a space where something's built on, when you talk about an entire development and where, where that open space sits. And it can be, you can pick some spots here, and pick some spots, the way it's, the way the ordinance is written, and the way the general definition is. So I, I mean, I agree that it's, it's sometimes frustrating, because open space doesn't mean usable open space, but that is just a different, you know, definition. So open, all it means is open.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't, yes.
Deb Oscar again. So with regards to open space, I noticed that this is the, this is the retaining pond, I think.
No.
Or, oh, this is, this is a...
That's a lot.
So on, is open space, does it encompass the retaining ponds?
No.
Okay, so there, when it's calculated, there is a, a retaining pond within this green. And then originally, when this house was built, and this one, there was not a gravel path, but because of the drainage and the different issues, there is a gravel path at some point within their property, this lot. And there's some sort of retaining pond down here. Because sometimes I walk down this gravel, and there's a pond. So the area, Mr. Holdren, you're saying that the, that the retaining ponds are not part of the open space?
They're not part of that nine point four acres that I noted. What you're seeing here is all the open space, which is ten point some odd acres.
Okay, so you calculated that out of the equation.
Let me put it this way, they calculated that. I have not calculated that.
Okay. I would be interested, and maybe the other residents, sorry about that, like, would be interested to know the actual calculation for the current.
One of the things we, or I have been asking for, is to see this development as a whole, as part of this.
Yes, sir.
So that's, and that would be part of that as well. What is open space, what's not open space?
Yes, okay. All right, thank you, folks.
But I think, Mark, just to be clear, when, when this came through for approvals.
Originally?
Originally, yes. When it came through for the original approvals, I mean, we have engineers, we have people who look at all of this.
Right.
It's not like the developer just submits a proposal, and we just accept it. We have it.
They submit something, we review it.
And then it gets reviewed.
And then determine what it means.
And not, not just by our in-house staff. We have outside, we have outside engineers that look at everything. So I don't want anybody to walk away with the impression that, you know, a plan gets put in front of us, and they just look at it and say like, okay. And then we go through some checks or whatever. It is, it goes outside to other engineers that are, they're not, you know, township people, who evaluate it. And that's why when you come to other meetings from us, you'll see that, you know, there was that recommendation, and here's where all the comments. We don't have this, we don't have this, we don't believe this, 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 these calculations don't get met. So, so that process was gone through the first time, just so that, just so that you don't think, it just, it comes in. Okay.
And I think I was on the planning commission when this development was first proposed and developed. But I don't remember the details, and I don't have, I didn't keep my notes. But I'm sure you have them on record somewhere.
We have them somewhere.
Minutes, I'm sure, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
Here we have box to box.
Correct. Unless you digitized everything.
That stuff, unfortunately, has not been digitized.
Okay. Are there any other comments from the audience? Earring or seeing none? But I, and the applicant has asked that it be tabled.
Do we want to do the extension first, or the table?
Okay, let, let's do the extension first.
What you need to do is recommend to council that it be an extension.
Right.
Okay.
Or not be an extension, I suppose.
Right.
So I'll move that we recommend to council a sixty-day extension of the Juniper Woods Lot Two Hundred subdivision plan.
I'll second.
And I would just only, just for the record, that based upon the developer's request.
Yes, based upon the developer's request.
That was made here at the meeting tonight.
And you'll fill out the form from Mark.
Right. Then, then we make our recommendation. That would be my only.
So Jonathan made the motion, Leslie seconded it. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Four ayes. Yeah, no place.
And then I will make the motion that the, that the request for the Juniper Woods Lot Two Hundred subdivision plan one, request for the additional lot be tabled at this time.
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Four. Thank you. Okay. Thank you. So next.
Coming up.
Coglins Law Kitchen and Tap. I guess since the sun went down and there's no illumination outside, if we opened the drapes, there's curtains, we'd see this property.
Yes, so this is a, I'll give it a minute here.
Yep.
So this is a development very close to here, right across the street. It is a proposal for a restaurant and a taproom. So location, as I noted, is six fifteen East McMurray. It's right across the street here. We are sitting right about here, and across East McMurray is the site in question. It is currently vacant. It does have a twenty-five-hundred, three-thousand-square-foot structure on it that's vacant. It was previously used as a medical office. There was also a garage that has since been demolished. The land itself is largely flat. It does have some slope from the road heading back to the commercial properties in the rear of the site. And the access to this site is off of a East McMurray here, and they do have an approved HOP for the current use. So the development itself, again, this is for a restaurant. It's roughly sixty-five-hundred square feet, as well as includes some outdoor seating, roughly sixteen-hundred square feet. They're proposing to have seventy-eight spaces, three of which will be handicapped. Stormwater will be handled by a pond in the rear of the site, basically on the close side of the site here. And as I mentioned earlier, vehicle access will remain at the same point that it is today, with minimal changes to that existing driveway. And again, it has the appropriate HOP for this proposed use. You can see I have some of the proposed sketches here. It does meet our architectural requirements for the building itself and the different architectural elements that you need to have. From a connectivity standpoint, there is pedestrian access to the street-side sidewalk system. However, there currently is proposed no vehicular connections to the adjoining properties as required. We'll talk about that in a minute. And they did submit a lighting plan with the most recent version, a revision, I should say, that was provided to township staff, so that needs to be reviewed. And you can also see here just some of the landscaping that they're proposing along the perimeter of the site. So from our standpoint, there are a number of comments that staff and consultants have provided to the, to the developer, the applicant. They have provided revisions based on those comments. We have not had a chance to verify in detail that those comments have been addressed, however, we have gone through them briefly. Some of the notable things that are still open, staff has questions regarding some of the grading around the stormwater pond in the rear of the site. There's also questions of whether or not they should provide a cross-access easement that is required. This is a, basically a driveway access between adjoining properties.
Is that to the, is it a bank?
Well, there's, there's a bank on one side, and there's the lawnmower and eyeglass place on the other side.
That one right there.
Yes. And what they're requesting is to not have to make that. So one of the things that we should do tonight is make a recommendation as to whether or not council should approve requiring that or not requiring those connections.
Question, are connectivity requirements, are they generally based on accessibility to a red light, where that isn't an issue in this instance?
No, it's, it's more about just making sure that properties are connected, so that, one, you potentially don't need as many driveways, but also so that if you're on one site and you need to go to the next site, you don't have to go out to the main road. And there are some, still some dimensional issues with the parking lot in terms of circulation for emergency vehicles or delivery vehicles, so we still need to talk a little bit about that. And the eighty-eight parking spaces needed to be adjusted, but I believe that's actually been taken care of with the most latest version of the plans. But with that said, staff is recommending that this plan also be tabled, just so that we can verify that those comments have been addressed. I do know, Mr. Mudry just released a draft to me, probably an hour before the meeting. It does look like a lot of the comments have been addressed. And then in talking with Shannon here, you've reviewed quite a bit of the, maybe not necessarily in detail, but.
Yes, most of our comments have been addressed as well, but we haven't issued an additional letter yet.
Right. So we still need to verify in detail, sit down, actually.
Question, would Mudry, I'm sorry, would, Mr. Mudry?
Yes, I know, we all call him Mudry, yes.
Would Mudry be here next month, that we could ask him about the connectivity relative to grading?
If you would like him here, I can ask to see if we get either him or one of his colleagues.
Where are we on?
This is, this is day one.
Yes, okay, so, right.
So maybe this is a question for the applicant when I come up, that I'm wondering what the justification is to ask these two employees.
You can ask the applicant.
And I, just before we get there, absent the connectivity, there's really only one in and out.
Correct.
Right? And it's all in and out on.
East McMurray.
Right before it gets to the light.
Yes, it's, right.
It's like Luciano's would be similar, right, the access?
Lorenzo's.
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 Yes.
It would be similar to that.
That's correct.
Okay, okay.
I think their attorney and.
Identify yourself.
Kim Gales from J.R. Gales and Associates.
Thank you.
Their attorney and their insurance agency is worried about the liability of people crossing through. There's also, on the right-hand side, it's a, quite a, it's like a two-to-one bank. It's not real high, but the connectivity would be challenging, let's say, I would think.
You can kind of see, I think you're referring to this area right here.
Yeah.
What area?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Does that go to the eye gallery, or does that go to the other?
So this way, so this is East McMurray.
Right.
The eye gallery is at the bottom of the screen here. This would lead to the rear of the bank site right here.
And the banks, I don't mean to interrupt you, but in the bank sites and the gallery have what other entrance and exit points other than onto?
They have all the individual driveways.
But not, but nothing that takes us into the town, the actual town center?
Correct.
Has, there's nothing that gets you into there, right?
Correct, there's nothing. Nothing's connected essentially.
Yeah, so the question is, who goes from, the question, one of the questions is, who goes from the bank to the restaurant, the restaurant to the bank? And who goes from the eyeglass place to the restaurant, to the restaurant, to the eyeglass?
There's also a lawnmower store too.
And the lawnmower store. I guess the other question though for that would be though, does it still provide additional exit points if you have a place closed and then everybody's trying to leave? That would give more, rather than backup traffic and things like that to get out, I guess would be the, okay.
Yeah, I think the thing is that they would be out, if something happened on, in their parking from somebody going through, cutting through, they're the ones that there's liable. I understand your code.
That's the code, right? So, we don't decide the code, that's the code.
I, I am.
So, you understand it.
But what's interesting about this particular code is it actually gives planning commission and council the ability to waive that requirement.
If we were so inclined.
If you were so inclined.
And I guess my, my concern in response to that is just that, that's then, that would, that's in every single, you know, commercial development where you're trying to provide that connectivity so that you don't have people exiting the road every time. That question about, would I be liable? And if I wouldn't be liable, that would pretty much halt any commercial, you know, business or whatever from having connectivity. And we have it in other spots. Do you see what I mean? I'm not arguing with him to say kind of a response to that is that we have it in, and the goal has been that, especially on like 19 areas, is to allow for that connectivity. So, I mean, I get, I understand the client's point, but that's, that's kind of my thought, that you say no to that one, well then.
If it comes to this connectivity, who's responsible for maintaining, like for snow removal? If it's landscaped, who's responsible for?
It depends where that access point is, so the portion that's on Coglins Law would be their responsibility and the portion that's on the adjoining would be their respons, the adjoining's responsibility.
You'd almost have to have an imaginary line.
Your property.
Yeah. It's kind of like when you're mowing your yard. Sometimes you do a little bit further into the yard or vice versa.
But it's no different than any other pass-through connectivity for any other commercial business that we have in the township, right?
Correct.
Okay.
I think my concern would be more, what does, like, say about the grade change from property to property as far as can do the cars bottom out, that kind of thing.
Right. Well, and that would be a question for Mike, if you want me to have him here, or if he can't make it, you can go get someone else.
Yeah.
So can you, good.
Go ahead. Sorry, we were interrupting him.
No, I'll just, I'll leave this for Mark.
Did you, did you?
This is, I believe I actually...
Do you have that? Did you get it?
Yeah, I have this.
Okay.
Yeah.
Lost my train of thought there. What was?
That was our fault, sorry.
It was the, I think the grading.
The grading. I think that's, that's, it's going to be difficult with the grading to make access from here up this slope.
Is there any point along that?
And then likewise down here, you have a 25-foot cemetery easement. And then the buildings are right in here. So, making the connecting, you know.
Does that limit the, are you saying that limits the, the area where you can have the connection?
Yes.
Do you know what that, any thoughts on that, Mark? Has anybody commented on that?
Well, I think you're saying, right along here, they, they do have a driveway on the lawnmower and eyeglass.
That sounds pretty good.
Theoretically, you could connect into that. But this right here is a slope up to the bank. And also, this vacant land right here is actually owned by the school district, not by the bank. But it begs the question then, if we're requiring it here and here, do you also require it back to town, well, the town center? That's, that's a pretty decent slope.
Yeah. Well, and is there, question is, it's, the ordinance right now says connections to all businesses or connections?
It says connections to adjoining commercial properties, but it means it's open-ended so that you can potentially waive if you think.
Right.
Where's, I don't know, where's the access road to Tom's mower center, you mean a crossroad?
That's this right here.
You just keep going back.
Okay.
Yeah, you go straight back and it's right here.
You just go all the way back there and that's what that is. But he has no, but there's no back, there's no back exit.
Now.
You're landlocked back there, aren't you, Tom?
Pardon me?
You landlocked back there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's no room back there.
Okay.
And I plow all the snow in there. There's no room for snow, so I don't have a room. But I'm all for them having a business, but it's really tight back there.
Okay.
But who, I mean, would like to make more room, but what's going to happen with me with all these trucks I got coming back through there with these 18-wheelers? Got to go turn around, download equipment for me. Plus they have all landscapers and traders. They get to turn. They're going to come out on McMoray Road. Don't you, all those places, people come out on McMoray Road. Then 80-some people from their place are going to come out on McMoray Road.
Are you, are you speaking about the connectivity question or are you talking about the development as a whole?
I'm just talking about traffic.
You're talking traffic issues, okay. Okay. I thought you were speaking about if there was a, if they were connected, whether that would help or hurt you. That if there was a connection between the two properties?
Oh, you can't do that.
Whether that would help or hurt you.
I mean, you'd have people going all over the place. And they told us one time before that you want to go down into the magistrate place because everybody used that through, throughway.
Because they're in that back corner. They're in the back corner.
Well, the question, Mark, right, is really, is, I mean, they're, they're meeting all the ordinance requirements. The question at this point, or that, we don't see any reason why they wouldn't meet the other ordinance requirements. The question is on this connectivity requirement.
That's, in my mind, the biggest issue outstanding.
And the sidewalk?
Well, the sidewalk is part of the zoning ordinance. That may actually require zoning variance.
Because it's four feet.
It's four feet now. It would go to six feet. That's what's shown on the plan. But I think you're requesting four feet, right?
Four, I mean, five is 8A, so it'd have to be five. Five, but my neighbors are four. So if we got six, we're going to look like, we may have to stay.
I'm using some of that easement, you're probably got to, from that truck's a turnaround.
Yes, and...
I think I talked to him.
Yeah, that, you, there isn't an easement for, that's for a cemetery sewer, not for access.
Thank God I got that because those 18-wheelers couldn't turn around.
You can't, that won't continue.
What's that?
That won't be able to continue.
Well, then they're going to have to turn around on McMoray Road and back in like they used to years ago.
I mean...
It'd be a cluster, it'd be a cluster.
He's, he's, you can see on there how his parking encourage is on to the park, the gravel. And also, the eye doctor, our guys were there today, they use our parking lot.
They have to work. And they're using ours.
Yeah, and the eye doctor uses the parking lot.
They do.
And that's not going to be able to continue.
What would the hours for the restaurant be?
I'm sorry?
What would the hours for the restaurant be?
Monday would be four to 10:00. Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, we open up at 11:30 till 10:00. And Sunday, same.
Okay.
So you, now the owners do currently have like three restaurants, businesses.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, no.
As a lawyer, yeah. That is a question.
Yeah, okay.
But the more...
Did you have anything else?
They're more bulk, they have to be like, like dinner time.
That was more mine, that was what I was trying to...
Yeah, there's some lunch overlap, that would, should be a big issue.
It shouldn't be a big issue.
Okay.
I think the eye gallery's only open two nights till eight, Tuesday, Thursday or something, so that's not a big deal.
Okay. Did you have, I'm sorry, I think...
No, I didn't.
I interrupted you the whole time, so I didn't know if you wanted to say.
No. If you guys have any other questions, I think Mark said we did resubmit everything.
I would like to have Mark here.
And we'll give you a chance.
Could you restate what we are...
Yes, I want to require a reason.
I think there's, there's a couple parts here.
The grading issues, the, the connections, if they could be made if they're safe.
The, you're requesting that it be tabled, but then you also are asking us to approve or recommend.
Right. Yes, and so we need a, a motion to recommend or deny the cross-access easement because they're requesting a, a modification to the ordinance, however it's stated in the ordinance.
To not have cross...
A DBA from the ordinance, correct.
But if we don't think we have enough information at that time to make that recommendation, can we also just say we're not going to act on that?
You can table that, yes.
Okay.
Would we still go to council?
It still would need to go to council, but we can condition our approval on council. I don't know, we can figure something.
Would that delay going to council?
It may delay going to council, yes.
But if we're tabling anyway, we weren't going to give a recommendation one way or the other, right?
Correct, there's two parts.
No, no, I understand, I understand. But I mean, if we would address both parts in 30 days, like if Mr. Mudry could be here...
Would you be agreeable to do a presentation to council knowing that they may not, they would not make a, hopefully wouldn't make a decision until they heard back from us? Because we'd like to know if, if the connectivity is a good idea or a bad idea before we recommend the same to them.
Yeah, I just don't feel like I know enough information to make an informed recommendation one way or the other, because I think the way I, I look at it right now, there's reasons to say, yes, let's have that.
There's a reason to say no.
And then there's reasons to say, to require it as it's in the ordinance, but then there's also reasons to say, okay, there's a reason why you would waive that.
It does apply.
And I don't feel like I have enough factual knowledge or recommendations from a professional to do that.
I feel like if we're going to deviate from the ordinance, we need to know why we would deviate, because the, the backstop is, yes, you need to have connectivity and that should be our recommendation. But if there's information we could get that would say to us, it's a bad idea in this instance?
It would be a detriment to the overall.
Right, in that instance, I think it's, it's helpful to us to know that before we make a recommendation.
Because Leslie's right, the default is, it's required, so for, for us to come off of that default and waive it?
We need to understand why we would do that. And I think Mr. Mudry could explain to us if it's a bad idea.
There's a reason why we wouldn't want to waive it or something that, or that we should waive it, right? And just hear from a professional. But I, I, I don't feel like I have enough knowledge and information at this point to, to, to waive it.
Okay, right.
It's, but I don't want to vote no either without having the opportunity to hear those things as well.
Go ahead. This is Laura.
I'm Laura, my husband and I are one of the owners. Mark, can you put it on the map?
The old map, the existing?
Uh, no, the new one. Okay. So here's our entrance, right? Here, oh, carefully, right here is the entrance door, the eye gallery, crossroads. Okay, so they're side by side. So how our insurance agent views this? Let's say you're coming down and you have an eye, you're late. If we have this connectivity back here, oh, I'm just going to shoot through cogs, like you hit one of my patrons, it's on us. That's how we're liable. So back here, we could propose a potential?
An easement.
Yes.
An easement.
Because when, say this develops someday, that, that's more acceptable. Think about a mall, it's always like back here, you're not going to go, oh, I'm going to come up here and I'm going to come around here. So that's how he views this, is from here to here, is unnecessary. And I think it takes from top, if he needs everything he can down here. I mean, I guess he'll lose, he is, you are in like Dr. Tang's property right now, with the gravel?
Yeah. Well, on easement and sewer line, I guess.
Yeah, so we, we did stake it, can have the stake, it's weeded now, where...
I think I'm right on the border.
No, the, the gravel's...
I mean, four feet, yeah.
It's, you can measure, I didn't measure it this evening.
I think that's something between you guys.
Yeah. No, that, it's on our property.
Hey, hey, guys. This isn't something to be discussed in front of us, so...
Right, and, and to be fair, the insurance issues aren't something that I think would sway us, just because everyone has property insurance issues relative to the connectivity. But if we can get an expert from one of our, or expertise of one of our consultants in to discuss the pros and cons, I think that would be helpful. It may be helpful to you, I know it would be helpful, Tom.
Yes, of course.
And I think it slows things down really, because we're going to table at the request, we're going to table anyway. I know, I think, Mark would have liked to have something to take to, to council, but I...
I think they would want to...
They really want the waiver, but I don't feel like I can vote one way or the other at this point, yeah.
It's at your prerogative.
Yeah. And I get the reasons why, to me, it's more feasibility and does it make sense in my head, right? For some, I mean, I understand the insurance issue, I definitely understand it. But again, yeah, but I mean, as far as one of their reasons, but then that would be, that's every single commercial property, right? Where there's toss-thrus.
Because I think with the mowing business back there, to, to have that maybe coming past back through our lot would not be a good idea.
Understandable, and again, I think...
Yeah, you know, if somebody...
So I think, again, the bottom line here kind of is, we're going to wait for Mr. Mudry to give us some technical information about this so we can make a decision. It is the default, and so if we're going to go against the default, we need a valid technical reason. I think it's kind of where we're at at this point.
Okay. I'm just going, I haven't discussed that with the applicant, leaving just an easement for future, is that an option?
Well, I think that's something maybe, again, we have a month, you guys can have a month to talk about other alternatives or options or anything else to...
Just, so you guys are aware, in past, what we've sometimes done is, because we can't necessarily compel the other property owner to provide that connectivity, at least build up to it or make it an easement of some sort that when the time comes, the other property redevelops, then that connection is made.
It's great for people, yeah.
Right. Right.
Something to consider next week, or next month.
Thank you, that's the point.
So should we combine these two?
Well, it sounds like we're, we're just going to table it.
Right.
Yes, we're, we're not taking action on the two Sado recommendations, we would just
Separately
Correct, we don't, yeah, we don't have to.
The entire plan.
Right.
So, any other comments, I guess, before, oh, yeah, please, please come up, we don't want to jump the gun.
Hi, my name's John Cutsajohny, I'm Tom's brother-in-law, Peters Township resident, kids are born and raised here, and I'd like to say a few words.
Thank you for letting me speak, by the way, so I'd like to first of all start with, my in-laws have owned that property 37 years. My father-in-law built that from the ground up, when there wasn't a lot of congestion along the street, very few businesses. Over time, it has built up tremendously. The parcel next to us, adjacent to us, used to be a medical building with about 10 parking spots out in front. The back was used for employees in a garage, so none of the back of the parcel was used before. And if you could pull the overhead up, please? One of the things that we're talking about, I think is a very important point, so access to our property is jointly shared with DODI. Always has been forever. The medical building has its own traffic, okay? So, council recommends or requires vehicle access to adjacent properties, correct? Is that the way this is?
It's not council, it's the, the ordinance.
The ordinance, the ordinance, okay? And like my brother-in-law Tom was saying, in this instance, you're going to have to have through access to these parcels. Because he has 18-wheelers, he has landscapers that come in there, and right now, they use this part of this gravel, which I believe is an easement, we can clarify that. There's a 25-foot easement between the properties, sewer easement. So they come in here and they swing around, and they turn around and go back out. If we're saying what, if this is true, that we can no longer use this to swing trailers around or anything, we're going to be backing out onto the main street. 18-wheelers, unload Toro tractors and everything else, so you're going to shut down East McMurdo Road.
And they used to do that.
Okay, if you have access, and I'm not a proponent of this, I'm just stating the facts, if you have access, these 18-wheelers can come in, swing around, go back out. Again, we don't want to use their property, they don't want to use our property, that's fine, I get that, but in terms of traffic control, it's a must that you're going to approve this project, because there's no way for the vehicles to come in and out of here. When DODI has a sale over there, his people are parked in this grass, they're parked along our parking spots, it's, it's just going to be a nightmare, and yeah, he's open until 8 o'clock, we're open until 8 o'clock some evenings as well. So you have three businesses now, and they're talking 80 parking spots over here, that's the last I heard, I'm not sure if it's more or less.
Seventy-eight.
Seventy-eight. You have two access trials, in and out, so they're going to have a lane in and out, we have a lane in and out, coming out along to a two-lane street. This is not Route 19, a four-lane with traffic signals. It's going to be a problem.
Excuse me, at one time, was that called Low Lane? At one time, that road, that end easement was called Low Lane.
He's talking about the parcel between here, this easement.
We brought that property from the minister.
So, our property goes to the edge of this blacktop, and then there's a 25-foot sewer easement between the properties. So, there, there's 25 feet, it's like 12 and a half feet on each side, that goes into each, each property. It's not all 25 foot back on this Thomas property. So, with that being said, I think that council should consider some of these following facts or statistics. We should do a traffic impact analysis, has one been done yet? I'm not asking for an answer, sorry. We should do a safety impact assessment, again, my kids went to McMurray Elementary, on Friday afternoon, there's 50 to 100 kids walking down that street to Starbucks, going over to Heysler's, and now you're going to ask them to cross, across two busy thoroughways, driveways. Again, the doctor's office was there, 10, but it hasn't been there for years, and they had 10, 10 parking spots. But you're talking 78 parking spots at a busy time of the day, 3, 4 o'clock in the afternoon? The pedestrians, the kids that go down there on a Friday, go down to Starbucks. Emergency access, again, if you don't have that access joining the properties, how's emergency vehicles get in there and turn around? If our truck comes into his parking lot, they're not getting back out, they got to back out. Some of the surrounding property owners have concern, at least one of the other businesses we've talked to, so we're going to be putting a tap house right dead smack across from a police station, from a library, and 100 yards down from a school. Does that make sense? By law, I know you have so much distance away from education facilities and stuff like that, which probably within the ordinances, but from a theoretical common sense, and again, you have kids and families that are going to be passing, and you're going to have outdoor seating right along the sidewalk, across from a library. Impact on the property values. So now we're putting a ale house, tap house, right smack, again, in a smaller footprint than what something like this would normally be built. You know, you go up to Trinity Point, you go along 19, Applebee's, even Pizzazz, you know, they're on a major thoroughway. This is a very congested area, as it is, again, 3, 4 o'clock, with the school buses coming down there, and the parent pickup up at the school? You can't get up and down East McMurdo Road, you can't. Environmental and social impacts, like the, the noise, you know, there's going to be seating outside, there's going to be lighting along there, there's going to be music playing. You know, how's that affect everything? Who's going to monitor all this? To make sure that, again, our community isn't being disrupted by a business coming in there. Something I found interesting that I wanted to share with the council, back in September of 2014, my father-in-law received a letter from the planning commission here stating that they did an assessment, and they forecasted he had an increase of four additional PM peak hour trips. I didn't even know what that meant, I already read it. They charged him $5,500 because he has more traffic in his parking lot than they assessed, than they thought he would originally, in 2014. $5,500 in 2014, that's a lot of money.
Is that the traffic impact fee?
Must be.
Yeah, I would, I would think so.
Yeah.
We're paying.
And now we're going to put 78 parking spots next door? And he's getting assessed a traffic impact fee? For a small business? It, it's just, it just doesn't make sense where we're trying to place this, I'm all for business, trust me. Former executive, 30 years, corporation, setting up new companies and everything, I'm for it. But where we're putting it, and what it's going to do to the surrounding businesses, to DODI who's been there forever, Crossland Mowers has been there forever, Lorenzo's down the street. I just think we need to reconsider this, and make sure we're doing the right thing for the community, not just, and I'm, again, I'm pro-business, by all means.
I would just point out, I believe this is a use permitted by right in the district, so if they meet the requirements, we can't deny them just to deny them, I mean, if they meet all of the requirements of the ordinance, it is a use permitted in the district in which it's located.
Yeah, but we should also do the studies, right, for safety and traffic and all that stuff?
Mr. Mudry, the comments about traffic.
Shouldn't there be a traffic study?
Books or whatever's required by the town.
Right, which
I missed that.
So traffic impact studies are always required, correct, in this case?
They're not always required, no, you have to meet a certain threshold before you're required, this plan did not meet that threshold.
What's the threshold?
Seventy-some odd trips of peak hour.
And what was this assessed at?
I would have to go back and look.
Well, and we can certainly ask if Mud, if Mr. Mudry
Sure. I would be particularly interested in traffic myself when we hear this next month.
Especially if you're coming up East McMurdo Road, and trying to make a left-hand turn in there, I mean, we see it every day, it's difficult right now. In adding the additional traffic, cutting in there, and people coming down, and people turning out, you have two driveways that are right next to each other. So it's potential, you've got two people accidenting at the same time, and one person trying to commit one of those two. It just creates an additional, a lot of congestion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just, just add to that about the easement? The owners have had a complete title report done, and there is no access easement in the rear, it is just strictly for sanitary sewer. So I just wanted to put that on the record.
We'll do that.
You, you understand that we're not considering anything
I know that, I think just on the record that, you know, it's not an access easement.
Yeah, sure.
Oh, sorry, go ahead, watch, sorry.
My name is Brian Vittier, my wife Laura spoke, but I just want to clarify that it is not, when the gentleman earlier said it's a tap house, it's not a, it's a restaurant. We have two other locations, one in North Hills, one in the Mount Washington area, we serve about 75% food, 25% alcohol, and it's more beer, so it's not a tap house, it's not a bar, it's a restaurant. I just want to clarify that for everybody.
I've been to the one in Mount Washington.
Oh, sorry, wait, wait, we're not going to have
Yeah, no.
No, I was just going to say
You have to wait until he comes up, we're not going to have you guys go back and forth, wait, please let him finish.
Until he sits down, he's, he's got
Please, please, let's take our turns, just to be fair.
Yeah, that's, I, that's all I wanted to say, it's like, I want to make it clear that it's, it's a restaurant.
It's a restaurant, okay.
I've been to the one in Mount Washington, so, yeah, sure.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Do you want to come back? We just tried to be polite and take turns, that's all.
Sorry, I thought she said it, I apologize. No, I said tap house because of the first slide, I think it said tap on there? Did it not say, could you please go back to the first slide?
No, there's no dispute that that's the name of it, that it's a tap house, but he's just clarifying that it's a restaurant.
Okay, and all the, all of the stuff I found online says restaurant and ale tap house, that's why I call it
He didn't, he's not saying that they don't sell, sell alcohol, he's just saying that it's also a restaurant, I think, just trying to clarify that it's not a bar.
And he's giving us the percentages of the business, that's all.
Thank you.
Yes.
In the name, it says kitchen and taps, I just want to clarify.
I make a motion that we table the, the Coghlan South, Lost South Hills Land Development Plan.
I'll second.
And you're tabling both?
I'm, I'm tabling the plan in its entirety, yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Say aye.
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 And the opposed? It is not tabled. Thank you, our next meeting is October
October 9th, October 9th. I feel bad that these, that had to wait the entire
Next item on the agenda is Waterdam Plaza, Rite Aid conversion.
All right, Mark, take it away.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This This is a plan for the Waterdam Shopping Center, located at the corner of Waterdam and Washington Road. It's an existing shopping center, the, the site is roughly, it's a little shy of six acres there. The shopping center itself has 40,000 square feet, and the area that we're talking about is a fraction of that, and that's the former Rite Aid site. That is currently 12,000 and some odd square feet. We also note that there are 234 existing parking spaces on the site. So the proposed development, is a two-stage development, the first is going to be to remove a section of the former Rite Aid store, and they're going to raise this section here, approximately 5,000 square feet. There will also be some additional demolition work on the site to make way for its reconfiguration of the parking. And the end result will be a 7,000 square foot building, be a commercial use, potentially two, maybe even three tenants. And what that will also allow for is a reconfiguration of the parking lot, which would include 10 additional spaces. So now we have essentially three rows of parking as opposed to two rows of parking.
And Waterdam Road is to the
To the left, yeah, just orient everyone, this is Waterdam Road, and this is Washington Road at the top, and there's a traffic signal here. There are very limited number of outstanding comments, they're all minor in nature, and all very resolvable. Therefore, in this case, staff is actually recommending that the planning commission approve this land development plan, and that the only conditions be that they resolve our outstanding issues of our last review letters, the Peters Township staff, as well as Gateway. And I will note the applicant is here as well, and he can provide some additional information, he also has some slides if he would like to present, it's up to him.
Join us.
Brian Allmater with the firm of Farron McCarty Gray, we're a landscape architecture and engineering firm. Andrew Stewart is representing the owner of Waterdam Partners also. Mr. Holder, sort of, he commented all of it, I, I don't think there's much more than I can say, honestly.
Well, your drawings had color.
Yeah, it had color, but I don't, I don't need it, it won't, you know, won't, won't delay it a little bit, but, no, essentially, we're able to reconfigure the, the Rite Aid. I think it makes a better parking lot with the, with the circulation, additional, 10 additional parking spaces essentially, less retail space, but it's more leasable for the
But it's going to be not one tenant.
No, it could be two or three, depending on, on the, on the, on the market conditions, yeah.
And there's no, you haven't identified any prospective tenants?
No, we don't have any at this time.
I sure would like to.
Yeah, exactly, if you know anybody, you know, Mr. Stewart's right here, he'll take his name and numbers.
Is the outlook agreeable to, to, about by the comments provided, the two comment letters?
Yes, I think the, the minor one was adding a chart for parking on one of the drawings, and addressing Gateway's comments. We did address those a couple of weeks ago, but I don't know if they had time to really go through them and make sure, most of them, I think, were, were basically clarification items, if I may.
Yeah, that seems to be the case. Do we have, I guess we have no one, public comment? Correct?
There's no public comment.
Leonard, do you have any?
Original comments were?
Our original comments were very minor, it was just adding a few things to the plans, like locations of existing and proposed utilities, ADA parking, compliance, and that was, that was the extent of the letter.
Okay, are we good?
Yes.
Okay, I move that the planning commission approve the Waterdam Plaza Rite Aid, pardon? Recommend approval of Waterdam
This is
No, it is.
That, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Like I was saying. I move that the planning commission approve the Waterdam Plaza Rite Aid Conversion Land Development Plan, subject to the two conditions of addressing outstanding comments from the township's letter of September 4th, and addressing outstanding comments from Gateway's letter of August 27th.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? 4-0, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Off the record, if I could say, I've been coming down here since, unlike many people, I built this with my partner, we still own it. That was in 95 and 96, it was a thrift drug, some of you remember a thrift drug.
I remember the brand, sure.
Yeah, my hair wasn't gray. My kids were yet to be, now they're out of college, we really enjoyed coming down here, this has been a great community to be part of. And, you know, we're old school in how we do things, not a lot of people build them and keep them.
Yeah.
But Leonard Silk and I, I enjoy our relationship with the municipality, and and the tenants there, you know, everybody knows Harris Pizza, Jersey Mike's, and, you know, it's a
Five guys, not?
Yeah.
Yep. I'm still going to get a milkshake, it might be worth it. Probably don't need it, but so, thank you very much, I was a little concerned that there was a lot of tabling going on.
No, no, we're more than happy to see something new go into, yeah, and that's
And you know, look, I, I have some perspective, because, you know, I've owned it for, I don't know, we've had tenants in there for 28 years, and it stays leased. And
That's a good spot.
Yeah, so, and it's a vibrant, busy business district, and, you know, like the, the Chinese restaurant, I, I made the deal with the guy's father, you know, it's really, the guy that I literally put just sold into one of his customers. That you know, few and far between are the tenants that haven't been there for 10 years or longer, that are part of the community, and you know, I got into it with my lender, because this was the only lender I had during COVID, when we wrote them a letter and said, you know, our tenants are in trouble, we want to help them, will you stay the principal part of our mortgage? And this is the only lender that said this to me. Every other lender across my portfolio was like, how can we help?
And they said?
These guys said, well, I, you know, my mortgage was, balance was low, they knew I wasn't going to walk, but they, you know, I felt it was a time when we all had to work together.
Sure.
And, and you know what, we sucked it up and put the money in, and, because that's what you do.
Right.
Well, I'm a Venetia resident, so I use, I use that file download, so
Oh, that's nice, thank you, I appreciate you helping us pay the money.
That Beanhead Restaurant has gotten more than in my Beanhead restaurant, Jersey Mike's.
Any staff on this?
I go to Jersey Mike's a lot, I go to Harry's a lot, I get my haircut at the
Actually, we have one staff on Comprehensive plan, open house, September 23rd, you probably got an alert if you signed up for PT Alert, maybe, September 23rd, 6 to 8, it's an open house, come in whenever you can, if you would like.
And the personnel issue, you want to
Yes, we will have finally an assistant planning director as of Monday, starting Monday.
Congratulations.
So for the next planning commission meeting, he will be here.
Oh, perfect, good, good, all right.
Meeting